I'd like to call to order the regular town council meeting for August 24th, 2022. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, one nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, just, and just for all.
Roll call, Beth.
Michael Aurelio.
Here.
Brian Blazak.
Present.
Wayne Pondinos.
Present.
Michael Schilling.
Here.
Gerald Swett.
Present.
Joe Wizewati.
Present.
David Westland.
Present.
Beth Hernandez, present.
Okay. So we have a quorum. All right. Item number three is public comment. The first speaker for public comment is Mr. Mark Shaw. If you come forward, state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Mark Shaw and I live at 129990 Sunflower Avenue in St. John, and I am opposed to Ms. Walsh's application for use variance. To minimize the potential for future similar applications for use variance, I would like the town council to consider clarifying St. John Town Code Section 3-1 definitions kennel or cattery by amending it to the following or similar language. Kennel or cattery. One, a commercial kennel is any premises wherein any person engages in the business of boarding, breeding, buying, letting for hire, training for a fee, or selling any number of dogs or cats. Two, a non-commercial kennel is any premises wherein any person owns, harbors, possesses, cares for, or keeps in custody six or more dogs and/or cats without financial remuneration. Three, all kennels, whether classified as commercial or non-commercial, are subject to the permit requirements found on St. John Town Code Section 3-4 permits and are prohibited from any zone classified as residential. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter, and I would like to provide the town council with a written copy of my statement.
Thank you. Dennis Snyder. I'm sorry, Denise Snyder, I apologize.
That's all right. Good evening. My name is Denise Snyder. I reside at 8847 Shilton Drive, St. John.
Can you bring the microphone down a little bit? Thank you.
Can you hear me? Okay. I am here this evening to express my opposition for the use variance of the operation of the dog daycare and boarding business by Mr. and Mrs. Walsh who rent the property at 12930 Snowberry Lane. On July 1st, I received a certified letter from Mrs. Walsh and the legal notice of public hearing from the town of St. John, which stated their intention to apply for the variance in the Sun Meadow subdivision. I attended the July 18th Board Zoning Appeals Meeting. I sent letters to all the board members, and I also spoke at the meeting. There were over 25 of my neighbors who were in attendance, all opposing the variance, and thankfully, the zoning appeals committee unanimously denied the variance. I am asking you to also consider that based on the information that they have said they've forwarded on to all of you to read the letters that we all sent and the comments that we made. At the meeting on July 18th, Mrs. Walsh stated that they were unaware of a town ordinance requiring a license to run a business from their home. As of July 1st, when they paid for and mailed the certified letters, I'm assuming that it's safe to assume that they were aware of the need for a license, and as of today, they are still continuing to operate the business. I've spoken to 10 neighbors whose property is adjacent to, across the street from, or in very close proximity to the Walshes', and we have all seen the business continue to operate. My question is, must we call the police every time we see a dog dropped off or picked up or in their yard? The Walshes have clearly stated that they do not own any pets. Can they legally continue to run this business? I ask you to consider the safety and financial evidence that we all provided at the last meeting, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Denise.
Bill Manassopoulos, 10011 Parrish. Just a couple of things, questions that we had jotted down from walking around. As far as the ARPA funds, do you guys plan on giving us a more detailed list as opposed to just a generic ordinance? And I'll run through these, you guys can answer them later, however you like to do it. Also, for additional information on the transparency with the redistricting, do you guys plan on holding a study session where the public will be involved and be able to give in its two cents? And then, a couple of, well, it's kind of funny, I'm the one standing here saying it, but we keep noticing more and more businesses that are from out of state in Illinois. Is there a reason we're not trying to attract Indiana businesses such as the last landscaper that was done? That's pretty much it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Frank Bradkey. I live at 13,000 Sunflower Avenue in St. John. I also attended the BZA meeting, the last one that was held, where there was evidence and letters presented regarding the doggy daycare that are asking for a variance in our subdivision. And I just wanted to make sure the council knows that I am opposed to that. It's a residential subdivision, and there should not be a variance granted for a business to operate out of a home, especially for someone who's not even a homeowner. There are renters in that home, and they're trying to run a business, so I am opposed to a variance granted for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Jeanette and Paul Schindler? Did you guys want to speak?
Hello, my name is Paul Schindler. I live at 12701 Goldenrod. I've been living in this town for 27 years, and we have commercial residents where they can go, Mr. and Mrs. Walsh. Even though they only live there part of, they rent, I think that they should go somewhere else. Also, they mentioned at the last meeting that they lived there for a year and a half and operated their business for a year and a half. Why haven't they been cited for that? Operating a business without a license? That's all I have to say. Thanks for your time.
PM and John. Paul?
Paul.
Paul.
We are fairly new in this town, and...
Need your address for the record.
Oh, 8761 Shilton Drive.
Thank you.
Okay, as I was saying, we're fairly new in this town. We've grown to really love this town. It's nice and quiet, people are friendly and the whole bit. I oppose this also. It is a residential area. It's a place of business, and it should be kept in the business area. Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wanted to come forward and speak that maybe didn't know you needed to sign in? No? Okay.
Can I say something, Jerry?
Oh, yes.
Since, and I think everybody got an email from one of the residents. I think that if there's a total disregard of what the town's telling these people about boarding the dogs, and they're still continuing, maybe we need to have code enforcement go over there and write them some tickets or do some enforcement, because it seems like they're disregarding what the town is saying. So if the board deems that necessary, maybe that should happen.
Yeah. No, I would agree. I think it's, I think it's the code enforcement that actually got this thing actually rolling when code enforcement went there.
Right.
Kind of motivated them to make sure they followed the rules. So, you know, I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I'm saying, I'm not saying they're doing a bad job, but it seems like the people that are there renting don't really care what the residents are saying, and maybe we need to put a stop to it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I believe, Wayne, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, their son owns the property and he rents it to him or whatever, just to clarify that it's not strangers' or family.
Right. But still, they're still violating our ordinance.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah. Well, thank you, Brian.
All right. So, yes, for those of you that are here this evening to speak or to be here because of the dog, the variance issue, thank you for coming out tonight. I really appreciate, we really appreciate the fact that you're concerned and willing to come out to a meeting to voice your concerns. Mr. Manassopoulos, as far as your answer to your question on the ARPA funds, tonight we'll be approving the placement of those funds or the expenditure of those funds. Next month, we will actually be getting into details where those funds will be going, and we already had two public hearings on that, so I would assume, well, you're gonna have to watch for the agenda on that one, because I'm not sure if it's just going to be public comment or if we're actually going to actually have a little public session there or not. So we had two public meetings on this, open sessions. We had absolutely no one express any concerns or direction on that, so. And the other one was the code enforcement question on the dog. So, okay. All right. Now we'll close public comment. Item number four is the approval of the minutes. You have before you the special town council study session, minutes for July 27, the regular town council meeting for July 27, and the town council special meeting on August 10. Questions or comments on the minutes? If not, do I have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve this minutes for the special study session on July 27, 2022, the town council regular meeting, July 27, 2022, and the town council special meeting on August 10, 2022.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm sorry, roll call, vote.
So...
She stepped out, she'll be right back.
So, should I just do the roll call?
I can do it.
You can do that, all right.
Mr. Blazak, how do you vote?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Pondinos?
Yes.
And Mr. Swett?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Okay.
Beth, I didn't mean to steal your thunder.
I apologize.
You do it much better than I do, so I'm going to leave you to that.
And she sounds better, too.
I'm sure she does.
No doubt.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five on our agenda is the proclamation acknowledging the month of September as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. Whereas every year, thousands of women in the United States are diagnosed with ovarian cancer. Like all cancers, ovarian cancer is brutal and cruel, inflicting plain, inflicting pain and hardship for women and their families. Like so many families, we too know the pain of cancer all too well. And whereas during National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, we honor the courage of those affected by ovarian cancer and renew our commitment to fighting this illness that takes the lives of far too many women. And whereas ovarian cancer ranks fifth in cancer deaths among women and causes more deaths than any other gynecological cancer, in 2022, it is estimated that 19,880 women will be diagnosed with ovarian cancer. Of those women diagnosed, an estimated 12,810 will lose their life to ovarian cancer this year. Sadly, the risk of women getting ovarian cancer is about 1 in 78 in her lifetime, and only 20% of all cases are found in stage one or two. If the cancer is caught in stage three or higher, the survival rate can be as low as 30%. Whereas as we observe National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month, we are united in our goal to improve the lives of all women carrying the burden of this disease, including the lives of their families and loved ones. We are also united in our support of the research, advocates, and healthcare professionals who are working tirelessly for new solutions to prevent, detect, and treat ovarian cancer and to improve the overall health and well-being of all women. Now therefore, let it be proclaimed by virtue of the authority vested in this public body by the laws of the state of Indiana, we here do proclaim September 2022 as National Ovarian Cancer Awareness Month. We urge all residents to join us in this special observance. Can we have a roll call on this, please?
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pondinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swett?
Yes.
That is approved, five to zero.
If I may, is Teresa here?
Yes.
Today? Where are you? Okay. I do have some pins for you. I want to thank you very much for bringing this awareness to the town. We are going to be observing, the staff here will be wearing the pins, and I have some for you, if you will.
I also have some jellies, if anybody would like any. Thank you.
Yeah. That'd be great.
I just want to say thank you and appreciate allowing us to build awareness in the town of St. John. I'm six and a half years, stage three C survivor, so obviously, it's very near and dear to me, so.
And one of our staff members here also, at the age of 16, had it, so she's recovered from that.
Okay.
And had children, so.
Okay, and if I can get a minute with you guys afterwards for some pictures, I'd appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number six, old business. I see no old business, so we'll move on to item number seven, new business. A is the financial matters of the corporation. Item one would be a request to purchase. Beth?
Sure, we have 14 RTPs in front of you this evening. One is from Industrial Water Services, V3 Companies, Landscaper Services of Illinois, Clemenge Tree Service, SDI, PermaSeal. You have two from Al Warren Oil, Ferguson Water Works, Sutton Asphalt, Empire Pipe and Supply, Precision Fence and Iron, and Archive Social, all totaling $171,718.67.
Questions or comments on the RTPs?
Yeah, I got a question.
Okay.
All right. On the, on one request to purchase, it's for a fracture, fracture trace analysis, which is for water, and it says it was completed by Jason. Jason's not on the water department, he's the IT guy, so I think that should have been presented by Bob Deloys or Mike Baltimore. And it's for $62,000, $6,250. That was one. And then we got one from V3 Companies, and I don't know, I don't know the answer to this, but it says produce the primary plat of subdivision at Gates Park, and that's for 6,900. Is that normal? Joe, you signed this, so do we normally pay for the plat, primary plat of subdivision?
With respect to the plat of subdivision, Councilman, that was for subdividing the Gates Park into two parcels.
Okay. All right, so that was dividing it, so if there's a call, the east side has one address and the west side has another.
That's correct.
Okay, so I got that. And then the other one was presented by Jason, and it's for the Archive Social yearly renewal. And I know last year, we kind of questioned it and whether or not it was a good idea for the town. It's for the town's Facebook, Instagram, et cetera accounts. And one of the Councilmen after that, and this was, you know, a year ago, there was three different things that we okayed. It was 5,000 here, 3,000 there, 4,000 there, and that the gentleman said, you know, it's nickel and diming us to death. Is it really necessary to get that? Are we using it or have we used it in the last year? Because I think there was some discussion that we could cancel it this year or the next year when it came about. So how important is it?
It's Jason Dravik, Mr. Pondinos. It is very important that we archive all of the social media accounts so that when we get FOIA requests, that we can properly answer them. Without it, it takes a lot of extra time to compile a FOIA request answer.
Okay, I just asking a question. I know there was some discussion of how important it was, and if we're using it, that's fine. If we're not using it, then, you know, the answer to the other Councilman's question last year, then we don't really, maybe we don't need it.
It's been extremely useful.
Okay, all right.
How many times have we used it in the past year?
At least three that I can recall.
So in three times, at $6,000, that's $2,000 every time we use it, that we can say we got $2,000 worth of credit out of it?
I don't know. I would have to sit down and do the math on my hourly rate and how much it would cost to compile it manually.
Right. So I did, I just remember, you know, all of that stuff came forward near the end of the year, and the comment was, hey, this is going to nickel and dime us, you know? And it was, it's a true comment, I think, so that's why I brought it up.
Well, the price did increase this year because we did go over the threshold that we set for last year. Last year, we were archiving on average about 500 comments per month. Now I think we're up to the 750, 1,000 mark, so that put us into a different price bracket.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Then I will entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the RTPs in the amount of $171,718.67.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
Sorry, roll call.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pondinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swett?
Yes. Okay, that is approved, five to zero. Item number two, we've got the docket in front of you, the vouchers dating for the amount of $2,124,635.55. Questions or comments?
So I had a few questions on there, and I want to thank Beth for forwarding over the requested invoices for me checking over the docket. There was a lot of them, and so I had a couple of questions. I was not able to tie out the AT&amp;T corp bills. Beth, is it, good to talk about it now, or should I send you an email in the morning, or?
Do you have them in front of you?
I do. So I have the AT&amp;T bill in front of me. I can't tie it out to the docket.
Are you, you'd have to also take a look at the water district, sanitary district, water utility, and wastewater utility dockets, because the bills are split up amongst several different departments? So if you're trying to tie out the bill to only this docket, it won't work on things like NIPSco, phone, cable, gasoline.
All right, so then I would suggest maybe you...
We could, yeah, maybe you can explain that further. Sounds good on that one. And then going through the NIPSco bills, I had some questions on those two. I noticed that many of them, many, many of them are paid late. We have their large late amounts.
They aren't paid late.
Why we do that?
It's not paid late. That is a timing issue of when the bill is resent versus when they're paid.
Well, some of these bills are from June.
Because if they didn't make it on the June docket, then they're probably now made on this docket, but I can have asked Kathy that.
Okay, I appreciate that, because some...
The system doesn't always, the way we have to pull invoices into the system is by date, and sometimes if a date gets cut off in between, if we catch that it didn't make that particular docket, we try to put it on the very next docket, but we keep like a stack of invoices that didn't make one docket, so we can try to catch it for an upcoming docket.
Okay. Well, maybe we could talk about that. I'd appreciate maybe understanding that a bit better, because I know some are from May, some are from June, July, the varies, the dates vary a bit.
The service or the invoice?
Both. The invoice, and then some of the payments vary wildly as well. And then there's, there are actually a couple that are actually overpaid then. So we have some overpayments on a couple of them, and then there's a handful that are actually paid on time.
Sure, that is a large part because they were redoing some accounts with streetlights. So they took some streetlights around town and moved them off one invoice and placed them on another invoice. So if you see an overpayment on one account while they were doing this transition, then it ends up getting applied to the next account. We have talked to, tried to talk to NIPSco about consolidating accounts. We see 75 different invoices a month from NIPSco, and they are not willing to, Jason, I don't know if you've ever been a part of trying to work with the NIPSco consolidation, but it's...
They do what they want.
It would be wonderful if they consolidated some of those. Yeah, there's 80-something bills.
Sure, we could, we could, we would be happy to give you our contact's number if you'd like to call and see if you can get them consolidated.
Hope that maybe somebody in your wonderful office could try to do that.
We've tried, I mean, we've tried, and I'm certain Jason in the past has tried, and I know Tammy from Public Works has tried.
Really? Well, that's great.
Jerry Surry has tried.
Jerry Surry has tried. I'm sure Judy Campanic has tried.
Okay.
All right. And then one, I know that, I've noticed some bills in there as well that are out of a, out of a fund that I don't recognize, a cable fund, cable TV promotion, promotional fund. Why do we pay out of that fund when it appears to be their park, their park expenses?
What park expenses are you referring to?
There is some gadgets for, for, I don't know what they're for, some toys, it looks like. Also, there is some T-shirts for the upcoming, upcoming movie in the park T-shirts. So doesn't that belong in the Parks Department?
So in the past, when we had, well, up until now, you're the first person to bring it up, Parks has had certain events, and as you're aware, the Clerk Treasurer will do some events, the EDC Board will do some events. The particular movie in the park event that you're referencing is the movie in the park event for September 9th. That event is not a park event out of the Parks Department. I wouldn't think that it would be appropriate for an event that's being sponsored by my office to try to take the funds out of the Parks Office.
Okay.
So in the past, there's always been in that promotional, like you said, cable TV. Now cable TV is not a taxpayer-funded account. That is an account that is funded by a franchise fee from cable. And there is a promotional line item that's in that fund, and it has always been there, and that has paid for certain things like the flags that we see hanging, well, we no longer see the flags hanging around town, but the flags that were hanging around town that have been taken down. When we do the 9/11 display on the front lawn, the promotional line item from cable TV will pay for that.
Those are great items, for sure. Is there a better way of, just, you know, I don't want to spend too much time on it.
I'm sorry, but when we did, when planning the movie in the park event for September 9th...
And you want to compare costs.
There's a set budget that goes into planning that, and so those expenses come out of the cable TV promotional line item.
Wouldn't it, I was going to say, so for future reference, when we come back in a couple of years, and we kind of want to see a progression of cost for certain events and kind of get a handle on that, that would make it more difficult to spot that under that, that line item versus just where it would belong, maybe a Parks or Department of Works.
So it would be difficult to go back to the appropriation report and look at the promotional line item, click on it and see what expenses came from there?
Could you at least give that some thought? Just, I'm just thinking, when we come back and consolidate those or compare costs a couple of years from now, just a best practice, you know, if it's a park event or if it's going to be a town event or a Clerk Treasurer event, just to be, you know, if it's under cable TV, it's harder, it's harder to find over time.
It's under cable TV promotional events. It's under cable TV promotional events.
Right.
If you think that there's a better place for promotional events to be sponsored from, I'm open to...
Yeah, let's talk about it.
No, with your suggestion.
Well, I think if it's going to be a Parks event, where you're going to use Park Services or Public Works, or, so this should go into a general, I think it should go where you can find it. So in two years now, if we have a park event, we should be able to...
We are getting a little bit off the rails here. We're here to approve... We are getting a little bit off the rails here. We're here to approve the docket and pay the bills that are before us.
Thank you, Mr. Swatz.
Guys wanted to figure out better ways to do some of our accounting. I'm in favor of that. This is not-
I agree with you wholeheartedly, Mr. Swatz.
Alright.
Jerry, that's been going on for, that's been going on for 16 years at least with cable TV. We can't try and reinvent the wheel for crying out loud. That's the way it's been. I mean, just accept it.
Well, just because you've done something a long time doesn't mean you can't improve from it. That's not a good reason to keep continuing something because I've done it forever.
And that's correct, but when you want to propose problems, then it's best to have a solution, not just proposed problems that don't truly exist.
Yeah, no, no, I agree with that. I agree with that.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the docket for $2,124,635.55.
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor, signify, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Abstain.
Oh, there's a conflict. I'm sorry. Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swatz?
Yes. That is approved four to zero, with one abstention. Item number three is a motion to approve the refund of receipt number 78686 for a building permit. Joe?
So this was a building permit that was issued and paid for. The buyer of the property made a decision to do otherwise. So there's a request to have this approved for the, by the council to refund the building permit fee.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Yeah, Jerry, was it necessary to refund the whole thing, or just add on, I think it's a $449 difference? Or is it just because of bookwork, we have to do the whole thing, refund the whole thing, and then charge the new amount, which is $17,516? Is that, wouldn't that have been easier just to, you know, add another $449? Or is that an accounting thing?
I would defer to Clerk Treasurer.
Either way, they've already paid it, so they've paid twice now, so.
Wayne, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. What was your question?
Is it easier, there's a $449 difference. Is it easier just to tell them, give us another $449? Or because of the way state board accounts might look at it, it's better to refund the whole thing and then recharge?
He needs to be refunded the whole amount, and then-
Okay. I thank you. My question's been answered.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the refund?
I'll make a motion to approve the refund, receipt number 78686 in the amount of $17,679.95, and authorize the Clerk Treasurer to remit the refund.
Thank you, Mike. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. All in favor, sign, I'm sorry, roll call?
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swatz?
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Okay, item B, ordinances and resolutions. Ordinance 1775, an ordinance of the Town of St. John, Indiana, Town Council approving the American Rescue Plan Act plan. Joe?
Thank you. So this ordinance is before the council tonight for adoption on second reading to approve the plan for the use of the ARPA funds for lost revenue to the town as a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. The Fed allows us to use up to $10 million as an exemption for the loss of revenue. So in answer to Mr. Manassopoulos's question, this is the generic plan. The appropriations will be done at a later date. We will have a public hearing prior to adoption of the appropriations. So the Clerk Treasurer will notice that meeting and the public hearing for that as well.
Okay. Questions or comments on the ordinance? This is second reading. So I have a motion to adopt ordinance 1775 on second reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
I'm sorry, roll call. I only wrote it right here.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swatz?
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Item number two, ordinance 1776, is an ordinance amending Chapter 13 of the Motor Vehicles and Traffic Articles 1, 2, 3, and 21 of the St. John Code of Ordinances pertaining to the administration and enforcement of traffic regulations, penalties for violations, prescribed vehicle operations of the local streets and highways in the town of St. John, Indiana. Comments, Joe?
Yeah, so this ordinance cleans up the Traffic Enforcement Code, better identifying the speed limits in the town, the school zones in the town, and stop sign locations in the town. I want to thank Officer Schaefer and Police Chief Steve Flores for their hard work and input on this. They put a lot of time in developing this ordinance. There's a lot of specific locations identified in the ordinance with respect to the stop signs, and those locations are required by state law. So that's why the ordinance is before you tonight.
Okay. Questions or comments on the ordinance?
No.
Then I look for a motion to consider ordinance 1776 on first reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swatz?
Yes. That approved five to, or ordinances considered five to zero. Item number three is ordinance 1777, which is an ordinance established in the town of St. John. Nope. Nope, not tonight. Ordinance 1777 is an ordinance establishing the Town of St. John, Indiana Arts Commission Grant Fund and all matters related there, too. Joe?
So this was requested previously by the Clerk Treasurer. The town was awarded a grant for, I think, $3,900. So we want to make sure that the funds are identified in the correct fund. So that is the reason for this ordinance, to create that fund.
Questions or comments on ordinance 1777? And I will look for a motion to consider ordinance 1777 on first reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Is there support for that?
A second, I-
Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swatz?
Yes. That is approved five to zero. For the, consider ordinance 1777. We move on to item number four. Are we gonna adopt on, do we want to do that tonight?
We can.
There's not a rush, Mr. Swatz, if you don't want to do it tonight. We haven't received funds.
I prefer not to.
Okay.
I always like to give an extra month for everybody to take a look at it.
Sure, not a problem on that one.
Okay. And then ordinance 1778, is an ordinance establishing the rules and conduct within the parks and recreation areas and establishing fines and penalties for violation of park rules in the town of St. John, Lake County, Indiana. Joe?
So this ordinance establishes the rules for the parks within the town of St. John. Town currently has no rules in place, which applies to parks, and this kind of will codify those rules. And establish, you know, park hours, skateboarding and non-skateboarding areas, stuff like that. So this kind of puts all of that together. The rules for the skate park will be presented as an amendment at a future meeting.
Okay, so those aren't included in this?
The skate park rules are not included in this. Those are being developed.
Okay.
As the skate park is pretty much open.
Okay. Questions or comments on ordinance 1778? And I will look for a motion to consider ordinance 1778 on first reading.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swatz?
Yes. So, Joe, since we've got skateboard park, skateboard park opening soon, do we want to get these passed so that we can piggyback the other on there?
Well, we want to get the rules adopted.
Okay.
We will make an amendment to this, to add those. I know that the attorney's working on getting those compiled.
Okay. So based on that, I would really like to adopt this ordinance tonight if, since we've got a unanimous vote on that. I would like to adopt ordinance 1778 on first reading. Do I have that motion?
Yeah, second reading.
Second reading?
So moved.
Thank you, Mike. Support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, comments? Alright, roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swatz?
Yes. That is adopted five to zero. Resolution 2022-08-24 is approving the interlocal cooperation agreement between the Town of St. John with the Town of Sherrville and Lake County for the street improvements on West 85th Avenue. Joe?
So the Town Council previously approved this interlocal cooperation agreement for the West 85th project from Alexander to Lake Hills Drive with Sherrville and Lake County. However, the bids came in about 30% higher based on the projected costs by the engineer. We negotiated with the Town of Sherrville and Lake County to increase their contributions, and they agreed to do so. The town will be funding the project using the ARPA money. This project bid came back at a total of $845,000. I guess time's up. Anyway, the project came in at $845,543.75. Milestone was the successful bidder on this. We did have a pre-construction meeting with them this afternoon. The Town of Sherrville was also here for that meeting. This project is expected to begin on or about September 12th. There will be some road closures and detours for this. It should be a short period of about three weeks to get the whole project completed. But we're looking forward to getting some of our money back from Lake County and from Sherrville, and a little bit more.
Okay. Anybody have questions on resolution with the interlocal government agreement?
Yeah, I got a comment. It's a good thing that we had the ARPA money for it. We started doing this, and we didn't know where the money was gonna come from, so. And I thank Sherrville and the county for kicking in their share, because if not, I don't know where the money would have came from.
We didn't, we didn't either, Wayne, until we sat down and talked to them. And they were very, very agreeable. So it's been a successful negotiation, and they've carried their weight, so.
Right. Everybody involved, yeah, everybody involved did a good job.
Absolutely.
But my point was, it started out, and we didn't know where the money was gonna come from. And if we're ever gonna do a big project like that, we have to make sure we do our homework and get it all set up, where we don't have to start looking for money, and we've already made commitment to engineers and stuff. That was my point.
Yeah, what was, what was nice about the whole, the whole setup was that they were very cooperative and very agreeable, and came along with the project, and they're as anxious to get it done as we are.
Yeah, it all worked out good.
Yes, it did.
Okay, so do I have a motion to approve Resolution 2022-08-24?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swatz?
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Alright. Item C is council action. The first item is a motion to approve or deny the use variance for 2930 Snowberry Lane of St. John. Joe?
Thank you. So this matter comes to you this evening with an unfavorable recommendation from the Board of Zoning Appeal. This matter is for the use variance to allow a dog daycare and boarding kennel in an R2 single-family district. For the record, we did receive one letter that I will include for the record as well, basically opposed to this action as well.
I think we also got three emails between yesterday and today.
Okay. We'll make sure that those-
In addition to what was here, in addition to the minutes that we got from the BZA.
And we'll make sure that those are included in the record as well.
Questions or comments? Brian, anything?
In regards to this subject, since it involves the BZA and Planning Commission for review and recommendations, I've asked the planning director with legal counsel to draw up what is necessary to revise the subdivision control ordinance. And while we're at it, we're going to look at any business moving in or out that may be involved in any type of puppy mill operation, and what that legally involves and what it's going to require. Thank you, Jerry.
Make sure that we can define what the kennel is, like the commenter made tonight. So, yeah, good. Alright, any other comments or questions? Then I will look for a motion. Motion to approve or no motion to deny.
Make a motion to deny a use variance for 12930 Snowberry Lane for a dog kennel.
Is there support? Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
Mr. Swatz?
Yes. That is denied by a vote of five to zero.
We'll have code enforcement take a look over there, making sure they're not in violation of that.
Okay.
And we will be working with our attorneys to draw up two items that I mentioned.
Okay. Item number two is consider the master engineering agreement with the town engineer, Robinson Engineering, and authorize Town Council President to execute the agreement. Joe?
Thank you. So the master agreement is presented this evening as a cost-saving method for the major engineering projects. So the Town of St. John has been paying out an hourly rate for engineering services for larger projects. So these can get pretty pricey over the term, depending on how long that project lasts. The master agreement will allow us to contain those billable hours by processing larger projects as a percentage of the overall cost of the project, so. And that will be paid out on a percentage basis as the project progresses.
Okay. Questions or comments?
Yeah, I got a couple questions. On page 20 of this agreement, under 6.08 Controlling Law Venue, it says, "This main agreement and task orders, unless expressly stated otherwise, are to be governed by the laws and regulations of the state in which the principal office of the owner is located, the state of Illinois slash Louisville County." Is that a typographical error?
It is. It should be, it should be Lake County, Indiana.
This, it's a different state, different county.
Correct.
So I would say you'd have to change that. And then, if you look on the very last page, this agreement was signed by Robinson Engineering on August 1st of 2022. We just got this, or I just got this, I don't know if anybody else just got it, last night at 9:05 PM. So if this was, my point is, if this was signed or brought to our attention, because it's been typed up, how come we're just getting this paperwork now? Or just the last night?
With respect to the timing, obviously, we hadn't had a council meeting in between then to where we could take action on that.
Right, but I'm just saying, if this was signed by Robinson, August 1st of '22, it's already the 24th, so 22 days, 23 days later, I'm just getting it in my hands, and I don't know if anybody else just got it. I'm questioning the timing of it. It should have been done sooner. That's my point, Joe.
Yeah. As far as the timing of it, you know, Wayne, I apologize in terms of, you know, not getting it to you. The matter was discussed back and forth with Robinson and I, and it was presented as part of the agenda item for this evening.
Right. Like I said, I'm questioning the timing of it, not what's in it, but it is, it does say Illinois, and I thought that was kind of strange.
That will be amended.
Right, okay.
So I guess my question, Wayne, is do you want this stuff as it comes across? Or do you want to wait to get it all a couple of days before the Town Council meeting? Because ideally, you can have this stuff in your hand by Friday.
He's asked for two and a half years to have this stuff in a timely fashion.
Right.
So again, and if you want to get it in a timely fashion, you got two girls working in the office, and we get this information at the last second. And then even today, they brought some more stuff to my house, which is fine. I get it. I understand that. But you have two girls working in the office. You need to get something done. But you have two girls working in the office, you need to get something done. I don't, I don't know i-if it's just mismanagement or, or what, but, and I'm not upset, I, I'll raise my voice, but I just think it's wrong that we do that. And somebody should have proofread this, because if I can look at it and find out it's, it's talking about Illinois in there, it's not Indiana, and, and the wrong county, then somebody else should look at it. And I know one time, somebody said, "You actually read all that stuff up?" Well, I tried to, and like I say, I'm not the best person for reading through everything, but I, I look at this, and I feel, think it's untimely, and it's just not right.
Okay. So, what's your pleasure in this, gentlemen? You want to defer this, Wayne?
Well, I think, I think you should, if you're going to pass this, then you need to make, when you pass this, consider it a master agreement. I would think that that wording has to change, but we didn't have any time to look at it.
Right.
Other than last night, so, yeah, if you want to defer it, defer it.
Okay.
That's your pleasure.
So, we can either defer this, or we can approve it with the modifications to get the correct state and county?
Well, that, and, and maybe we need to start getting our paperwork together, or working together as a team. There's five of us on the council, not two, not three. And as Mr. Schilling said, I have brought this off before, and when we all ran, it was going to be transparency, we were going to let the residents speak, we were going to do all of that. And now we're, we're looking worse than the professionals.
Okay.
I think you should defer it to next meeting. If you're not comfortable passing this, and I would like that, it definitely needs to be corrected, that's section 6.08a. So, only, I think you should defer it.
Well, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to defer.
Thank you, Mike. Support for that?
One second.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swatz?
Yes. That is deferred by a vote of five to zero. Okay. Item number three is to consider an agreement with Veritas Group for planning services regarding council redistricting for the town of St. John and to authorize the town council president to execute the agreement. Joe?
So, this agreement is before the council tonight as part of the redistricting required due to the census changes in the population. The town needs to redistrict according to state law. We have a representative here this evening from Veritas Group, so they're going to kind of just enlighten the, the council on this and how this all works, so if you would.
Thank you, Joe. Good evening. My name is Jack Woods. I'm a project analyst at the Veritas Group on our community and economic development team. We work with communities across the state of Indiana on economic development and construction projects. One of the things we found ourselves doing quite a bit of in 2022 is redistricting work because of the timing. We're two years past the census and what the state law requires, so I've put together a quick presentation here, just kind of going through the process, what our scope of work would be, and then I'm happy to answer any questions after, after we go through that. So, why are we doing this right now? As I mentioned a second ago, our state law requires us to look at the wards, in the case of St. John, two years after the census has been completed, so that was done in 2020. And you are required to complete your redistricting by December 31st, 2022. This seems to be, without crunching the ward numbers yet, a big priority for St. John, just because of the population growth you have had since the last census was completed. You've had over 5,000 new residents in the town, which is a 36% growth, so there is a pretty good chance that the wards have, have seen some imbalance over the past 10 years. So, as, as we go through this process, there are six goals that the state constitution lays out and that we need to be aware of. The first is to ensure that wards are as compact as possible, also that they are contiguous and composed of contiguous census tracts. Equal population, this is probably the most important one. The state law and also Supreme Court cases have noticed that we should try to have as equal population in each ward as possible. We also are required to respect precinct boundaries as much as possible to avoid voter confusion during, during elections. Also, comply with rules prohibiting discrimination, so we can't be drawing district boundaries to disenfranchise any special interest groups or racial groups. And then finally, we can also give deference to communities of interest, as long as it doesn't take away or detract from any of the five previous points that I just went through. So, if there's a neighborhood, we can draw the boundaries to ensure that, that that group, their interest is protected. So, how do we do this? How do we understand how these, how the ward populations are equal? We look at the ideal population. So, you have three wards, just over 20,000 residents, based on the 2022 census. So, we would divide that 20,000 number by three, and your ideal population for each ward is just over 6000, 6,700 residents, excuse me. So, as we redraw these boundaries or adjust the current ward boundaries, we will keep that number in mind, but because of the way census tracts or census blocks are drawn, it's not going to work out perfectly that we will hit that ideal population, so we get to this total deviation number. And that is calculated by taking the percentage of our ward that has the highest deviation and our percentage of our ward that has the lowest deviation, adding those together, that gives you your total deviation. The goal is to keep that under 10, and maybe I should rephrase that. The goal is to get that as, as close to zero as possible. Usually, under 10% is deemed satisfactory, though there have been court cases in the past, one that happened in Vigo County, where their council approved a ward or a district map with a 3.6% deviation, and that was struck down because they were also shown a map that had, I believe, a .42% deviation, and because it wasn't as near equal population as possible, their initial version was found unconstitutional. So, that would be our goal throughout this process, would be to make sure that, that your wards are as, as even as possible. So, our, our process for doing that would just be some initial due diligence, really data collection, pulling all the census data from the Census Bureau, and then also working with town staff to get parcel data, and then any maps that you have of the current wards, so we can understand what the balance of the existing wards are. That will take less than a month. It really would take me a few days to get done, but communication back with Joe and town staff give us a little extra time, but I anticipate that's less than a month to complete that. And then we get into the actual redistricting process, so we will create up to three different options for your review. We will review those with you, take into any consideration feedback from the council and staff, and then present those at a public meeting. Have a initial reading, reading of an updated ordinance, once we are able to select the desired version of the new ward maps, and then allow for a public comment. And then, at that point, have a final meeting after I've worked with the town attorney to get that ordinance updated, to, to approve that, the new ward maps. So, that's, that's everything that I've put together in that presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions or talk through this process further.
This has to be done by the end of the year?
It does. That's correct. December 31st.
Is there not a, is there another date that's earlier than that, that's crucial, in November sometime?
That is a good question, so.
I thought there was.
Yeah, I, I reviewed the state statutes this morning to understand what our timing was on that. I believe it says, and I, I wish I had have included the number on this in, in my presentation, that if you haven't completed it by March 31st, 2022, then all communities have to have it done by December 31st, 2022. So, I, I believe, I believe we're good until the end of the year.
Dave, do you concur with that?
I don't know the answer to that.
Maybe double check, because I know last-
Because I know we had talked about-
I thought it was no, early November. I could be wrong, so just to double check, we don't want to miss it.
Yeah, no, of course.
I know we get a, our final, final is, but I thought we had to have some first step done, our early November, just to double check.
Yeah, I will double check that, and, and with the timeline we've, we've laid out, I would like this to be done by the end of October.
That would be great.
Any other questions for Jack? Okay. Then I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to, first part is to consider? Okay, motion to approve the agreement with Veritas Group. That's my motion.
And the last line would be?
Aim for, aim for, and authorize the town president to execute the agreement.
I have a motion. Thank you, Mike. Is there support for that?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Well, I hear Luna barking in the background, so we'll start with her. Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swatz?
Yes. That is approved five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item four is a motion to approve and declare property surplus and authorize the disposition of such property. Joe?
So, the town has an old boat and trailer that's been not being used. It's been stored out in the garage back here for quite some time. So, the fire department wants to advertise this for sale, wants the council declares its surplus and authorizes its disposition.
What, it have a boat?
It's a boat.
What kind of conditions is it in?
No idea.
Excellent condition, it was never used.
Yeah.
I was surprised that, you know, nobody's ever mentioned it.
Is it 36-foot, this boat?
It ain't that big.
No.
I was going to say.
Do I have a motion to approve and declare property surplus and authorize the disposition of such property by advertising it pursuant to the Indiana law?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. There's support for that. Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swatz?
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Item number five is a motion to approve the agreement for facilities need assessment for the Parks and Recreation with American Structure Point. I believe, Mr. Aurelio, you wanted to defer this and have the park board look at that?
I would. I would, yeah, the, yeah, park board, I would, I would greatly appreciate the park board having a chance to review this first.
I don't think it'd be the park board, it would be the, uh-
Advisory committee.
Advisory, yeah.
Yes, thank you.
Committee.
Okay. Then we'll move on to number six, then. Item number six, tendering, consider tendering retired officer, police officer Brett Seidenbender his service weapon. Joe?
So, Officer Seidenbender is retired, and typically, town will convey their service weapon to the retired officer, provided they execute the hold harmless agreement.
Questions or comments?
I think that, that's a good idea, and I think, maybe, Joe, you ought to give him a plaque for his years of service.
Actually, I believe the police department has, has done that.
Because I don't, yeah, I, I don't know if they did or didn't.
To, to your point, I did suggest that to the chief, and that was respectfully declined.
Oh, okay, all right. I just, you know, I, I know when, when somebody puts in, I think he had 25 years in.
Yeah.
It's, it's a good way to say, hey, thank you, we appreciate what you did.
Totally agree.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Joe.
Also, do I have a motion, then, to approve? Conveyance of ownership and tendering of the service weapon to retired Officer Brett Seidenbender on the execution, the retard indemnification, and hold harmless agreement.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. All, a roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pandinos?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swatz?
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Item number seven is to consider the change order for the skate park, consider installation of concrete within the pump track of the skate park. Joe?
So, I'm going to have Michael Shea come up here, so we can kind of talk about this. We, we kind of solicited some quotes for getting the interior of the pump track done. One of the things that we did was the playground material surfacing. It's about 1,200 square feet roughly in that area. That was about $50,000, so we thought that was quite high to do that, for just that area, it didn't make sense to do. So, the alternative was to do concrete in there. So, we did receive a quote from one of our current vendors that's doing work here in town now, and we did ask for a quote from one of the folks who works with Spawn Ranch. Their quote came in verbally at about $27,000. I hadn't received a written quote from him, but that's what he told me, it was pretty firm on that price when we went out there and met with him. So, Mike, I don't know if you want to come up and, and add anything on that?
Yeah, that's most of what you said, yeah, we did look at the pour-in-place. It was going to be 50,000, as, as Joe has mentioned, which was going to be a little bit of the pour-in-place material and a little bit of turf, green turf, basically. Well, it looked nice, but it was going to be a lot overall. Other alternative was to do concrete, which came in with the same company who's doing the, working over at the, the skate park right now, or the, the west side on the playground. So, that's just white concrete, basically, which would kind of be a broom finish, be a little rougher finish than, than the, than the smooth look of the, of the skate park. Now, basically, that rough finish, too, is to try to stop people from cutting across. We could also do other things with, like, you know, benches or whatnot, too, to, to try to deteriorate some of that, you know, people crossing over and stuff like that as well. But the other option we talked about, too, was, you know, color with it, too. There was, there was additional expense for color concrete. I think it was 5,000 for some kind of green and bluish-type colors, which they did say does fade pretty quickly. And 3,000 for some other, other types of colors, you know, as well and stuff like that. But the 20,150, I believe is what it was, basically, was for the, the rough finish of white color concrete. Otherwise, the plan was to be dirt and grass, and that just, you know, would, would have been hard with a lawnmower to get through there, obviously, weed whipping. And, you know, more, more likely would have been mud and, and really just mud for, for the majority of it, more, more likely.
Yeah, I stopped out there as well, and, yeah, they were going over that with me as well. Last Saturday, I stopped out and seen the guys, and they were skateboarding all over, and-
Oh, yeah.
They wanted to make sure they pointed it out, and there's no doubt that, that middle area, if we left it dirt and grass, you then had to bring a big lawnmower over the track-
Yeah.
Probably over the years, causing damage.
Yeah.
Right, so this will, this will alleviate that problem, so.
Yeah, I think, really, the thing you only could do probably is weed whip it, you know, if you, if you kept it as grass, basically, you know, weeds and grass and stuff like that. So, just the other thing with, you know, using the white concrete, too, the, the pump track is more of a charcoal color, too, so that white, you know, the white color of concrete will, it won't look all one solid color, basically, and stuff. You'll have the charcoal color on the pump track.
They talked about the fancier, like, ashtray turf or whatever, and, yeah, it's just so expensive, right?
It's expensive, yeah. I mean, the, the, the nice part of that, too, you know, that would have gave that little bit of cushion, you know, if somebody would have wiped out or whatnot. I mean, it wouldn't prevent any injury or whatnot, but it would give a little bit of, you know, just like the playgrounds, you know, just like we, the stuff that we do.
Any other questions? No?
Yeah, that, I got one, if, if you're asking for the council's questions.
Yeah. Yes, Wayne?
Would, would this be considered a change order or just in addition to? Because a change order, the, the skate park is done.
Yeah.
Their, their people are done and gone, so is, is that a wrong use of words, or is that okay?
I, I wouldn't necessarily call it maybe a change order, because, I mean, there's a separate company as well who, who would be out there.
Yeah.
So, this would be more just in a, in addition. It's, it's not a-
I looked at it, I've been out there quite a few times, and it is nice to have concrete or something in there. I had mentioned to Joe that the hills that are next to the pump track, if those don't have to be concrete, you can maybe save some money. I, I told him where to look at a house that had, where they had these big boulders, not real big, stuck into that, and then they had the tall grass kind of growing out of that. That might work. It might look a little bit neater, but again, that's, to have landscaper do it, that could cost some money. But I don't know. Joe, did you ever look at that?
No, we, we talked to the guy about, you know, how, how we could configure and lay that out. The problem is, is that, you know, if we leave it exposed, that you're going to have erosion in that area, since those would be on, on the hilly areas, so there was concern about that. So, I think the easiest solution in terms of maintenance would be to, to basically seal that up with the concrete.
Yeah, I did-
And still tie it, and still tie it into the existing structure that's, that's there. So, that would still be tied in with the, the rebar.
Yeah, because they gotta go every eighteen to twenty inches, I think, and put the rebar pins in.
Right.
And then put all that rebar in, and that takes a while, but, um, okay. Sounds good.
Okay. So, then I will be looking for a motion to approve, not a change order, then, correct?
Addition.
An addition for the skate park and approve the installation of the concrete in the center of the pump track by Landscape Services of Illinois LLC in the amount of twenty thousand one hundred fifty dollars.
So moved.
Thank you, Brian. Support for that?
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pondinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swett?
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Item number eight is a motion to approve waiving vendor fees for the fire department open house. Joe?
So, the fire department is holding their open house in October. Much like we did last year, they're requesting the waiver of the vendor fees for that.
Okay. Questions or comments? And I look for a motion to approve waiving the vendor fees for the fire department open house.
All moved.
Thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pondinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swett?
Yes. That is approved five to zero. Item number nine is a motion to approve independent contractor agreement with Patrick Tortorisi for Parks and Recreation Department activities. Joe?
I'm gonna have Michael Shea, since he's here, to talk about that. Busy night.
Basically, it's with, working with Patrick to do some adult fitness slash stretching programs, basically, for the fall. And hopefully, you know, everything works out, and hopefully it would be, you know, do it again next year, twenty twenty-three as well.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
I got a two.
Go ahead.
I got a question about, he's gonna get seventy-five percent of registration fees? Isn't that kind of high?
I, no, I mean, necessarily, I think it's, I think it's common between seventy-thirty, seventy-five, twenty-five. I mean, some of the, some of the fees now that we have, some of the agreements now, I mean, are as small as ten dollars, you know, per registration fee that we receive for initially starting out with this. I thought it was fair to keep it the seventy-five, you know, twenty-five route. You know, seventy-thirty probably would be probably a little more common, but that's probably, it's probably necessarily more as high as it would go. There's, uh, my experience with working, you know, with contractors and stuff, normally, it's not anything less than that, you know?
Well, and I know that the people that are in that class are covered by our insurance, right? So, he's kind of getting off pretty easy. We're supplying the insurance, or they're insured because on town property. And then the, uh, the other question I have, you got to take effect from January first of twenty-two to December thirty-first of twenty-two. We're already past, we're almost in September. So, is that a typographical error or not?
I would assume this is...
Yeah. The agreements, basically, are just normal agreements. They're usually kind of cover the course of the year, you know, for the calendar year, basically.
Right.
So, the January first to December thirty-first, one, which is, are just a repeat agreement, basically, just changing the name and the payout amount, basically.
I guess what he's asking is, would it go through the end of December of this year?
Well, yeah, yeah. Ideally, yes. It would go through at the end of December this year, and then if everything looks up, we would have to do it again in January, correct?
All right. Okay. That's good.
All right. So, do I have a motion to approve the contractor's agreement?
So moved.
Thank you, Brian.
Second.
Thank you, Mike. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Mr. Pondinas?
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swett?
Yes. That is approved five to zero.
Mike, is he, is it like a yoga? Is that what it is?
It's like a, uh...
Or it's just stretching?
Yeah, it's like a boot camp type thing. I know Patrick's really into fitness type...
I was just curious if it was yoga or considered classified yoga.
Yeah, yeah. The stretch, it's not really yoga, I guess. I mean, I'm sure there's some resemblance with the two of them and stuff like that, but fitness slash stretching.
Okay.
Thank you, Mike. All right. Item number eight is reports and correspondence. Mike, anything?
No.
Mike?
You know, so I just want to mention that our economic development committee is up to, uh, up to speed here. We're going to have a, and Sergio did a great job putting this together. We're gonna have a team, a future development team come in on nine twenty-one, so it's September twenty-first, at the police department downstairs from six to eight thirty. I think the RDC is gonna be invited, the town council's gonna be invited, the plant commission, BZA, EDC, stakeholders and boards, to really try to plan and think out and have a strategy of making St. John a great, the best town it can be. So, that's what I got.
Okay. Thank you. Brian?
No, I think I'm done for today.
Wayne, anything?
Yeah, I'd like to, the corn roast, the people that put that together, and I don't know, I won't name all the names, other than Rob Seuss from Reichel Plumbing, always does a good job, and everybody else that worked with them. It was a great success. It was pretty well attended. I want to thank him for that, all his service that he's done, because he's out there the whole day sweating up a storm. That was great. Well, nine, well nine is, is they finished drilling it. They were getting like seven hundred ninety gallons a minute. They had to redo some work with it. Now, they're up to about eleven hundred gallons a minute, and maybe tomorrow, they'll start a twenty-four hour test where they'll run water as fast as they can, whatever will come out of there. It does have sulfur in it, so we have to discuss on how we're gonna treat it. The skating system, we were gonna do a sanitary side tour this week, but that was canceled. It'll probably be in another ten days, maybe next week, but maybe the week after, for anybody that's on the sanitary board that wants to go look at that. We can only take two members, and people from public works will be part of that. The skate park people got ahold of me. They want to have an opening day at September tenth, grand opening. They got a professional skater lined up. They got a, they want to know about a DJ and food, and whether or not the permits will be waived for them, for any of those vendors that might come out. The conduit, the electrical conduit for the, uh, the lights that would be out there, or possible lights, I think they're running that, they were running it today, and maybe tomorrow. There was a machine out there. And I think that, you know, I, that engineering thing has a bad taste in my mouth, and Haas Engineering donated a thousand dollars to the town, and then we kind of said, hey, we're not gonna use you, and we're getting another engineer. I'd like to see a thousand dollars that they gave back to the town refunded to them, because you got somebody that's been working for you for years. People say, you know, stay classy, St. John. That's not too classy. You know, guy gives you money to help you out, then you tell him, hey, you know, we can't use your services anymore. Then, uh, storm sewer fees, I think that that's been in discussion, and that's coming. I think we should tell the people that, hey, there's possible stormwater fees coming to the water bill, instead of trying to hide it. I think that's more transparent than wait until the end of the year or something, say, oh, this is what we're gonna have to have. But it should be something that we're considering, should be brought out there. The Kmart building, is there any words on that? I know there was some dialogue with the Kmart building, and people are asking me, are they putting apartments there? I said, well, uh, that's what the talk was, that somebody wanted apartments. I don't know if you guys know anything about that. And then Civic Park, the fate of Civic Park, after sitting and listening to some of these meetings, when Johnny Borstman was gonna do that park of his, the memorial park, the word came up removable. I'm like, why does it have to be removable? But now, in discussion with different people, I find out that removable meant that they were gonna move it. And the reason was, I've heard talk that the Civic Park might be, the baseball fields might be taken away. Civic Park, the street, might be run through the Joliet, if not possibly to Ninety-Sixth. Is there any knowledge of that? Is there any talk about that? And I was told that the existing building that you guys are in right now would be knocked down. What is that gonna cost the taxpayers? If there's talk about that, then it should be brought out and not, not be covered up by certain people. And that's all I got.
So, where are you hearing all these things, Wayne? Because they certainly aren't coming from anybody on this board.
Where are you hearing this? Who told you that?
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna reveal my source.
Sure.
Okay. No, I don't plan on tearing, I don't think we need to tear this building down.
Hey, Mike, if you think I'm making it up, I'm not, but I'm not gonna reveal my source.
Okay.
Or sources.
Okay. Yeah. So, boy, you threw a lot of stuff out there.
I can speak for myself. I'm completely against apartments.
What?
I said, I'll speak for myself. I'm completely against apartments over in Kmart, just for, I'm clear for the record, Wayne. I'm not sure you heard that from, but it's not true.
Well, again, uh, it, I was, I was kind of thrown underneath the gun once by, by Mr. Swett, and he said, well, you know what? You're a liaison, so you should talk about this stuff. And he's, I don't want you to talk about it today, and those were basically his words. I said, you know what? Give me a microphone, and I'll talk, because I've been out at the skate park every day, twice a day, Saturday, Sunday, talking to the people. I am involved with this town. I put my heart and soul into it, and I don't need to be kicked off of a park board or all that other stuff that you guys want to do. You took a perfectly good park board and dismantled it. You did away with summer help. That shame on you guys. And you can sit there and be proud of yourself? That's wrong. That is dead wrong. You know, I represent the people, and like I said, the people put us on this board, not just two of us, not three of us, all of us. We should all work together, and if we all work together, we could, we could be one heck of a team. And that's, that's, those are my comments, and I stand by that. And if I offended any of you, I apologize. But I'm gonna speak my piece, and that's just the way it should be, with all respect. Thank you.
Boy, you want to be a part of things, but yet, if I make a phone call, you don't return it. When I asked you to meet on something...
Oh, you know what? What did I tell you, Jerry? When you called me, you told me, oh, you want to be on MS Four, and what did you do? You stuck it to me. Anytime you talk to me, you stick it to me. And let's, let's talk about it, Jerry. You told me you want to be, you wanted me to be on NERPC. Oh, I'll let you know. No, you told me just recently, I'll call you Monday or Tuesday, and I said, okay, I'll talk to you about the ARPA money. Nothing. Crickets. And I did answer you. I did talk to you.
Wayne, I was talking the other day, too. You started screaming at me in town hall, like, kind of like now.
Well, and what did you tell me? What did you tell me, Mike? You told me I should keep you advised that I talk to a company.
You were doing interviews on behalf of everybody, and I was saying to you...
I'm not doing it on everybody. It wasn't an interview.
That's what you said.
And what did I tell you? You had a meeting with a developer. You and Jerry Swett had a meeting with a developer.
You're making it up, Wayne.
What?
You're making it up.
I didn't make it up. It was a Saturday. You and a developer and Jerry Swett were sitting in the office, having a meeting. Now, you tell me I'm a liar.
Yeah, I don't know what you're talking about. You're talking about we had a, we had a meeting with a bunch of developers on a Saturday morning?
Yes, because I, on Saturday, sometimes I go check my mail. What?
Was it last year or this year, or?
It was this year, Mike. You know.
So, anyways, I would like, I thought some of the...
And I'm done talking, but you keep wanting to bring it up. You want to bring things up, so I'll keep talking.
So, can we move on? So, I will say, one of the great points that Wayne brought up is that the grand opening for the skate park is on September tenth. That would, we really should focus on making that a nice event. You know, I think we should do our best to...
Thank you, Mike.
Pull in all the, yeah, pull, you know, pull in parks, or, you know, and even in economic development committee, they talked about making that a really nice, a nice event. That's gonna be just a, you know, that's gonna be a draw for our town. So, Mike, I gotta ask you, let's try to get that together and make that a real nice event, that grand opening.
Okay. I have nothing. Beth?
Um, I was just gonna briefly talk about the three-year excess levy growth appeal. Boring. But for everyone's edification, a unit qualifies to seek a three-year growth appeal if its average assessed value growth over the last three years exceeds the statewide average maximum levy growth quotient for the same time period by at least two percent. That's us. Okay? So, the town is going to be, and most likely, I can't speak on behalf of the DLGF, but most likely eligible for the three-year excess levy growth appeal once again this year. Our max levy, if approved, would increase by roughly two hundred and fifty-eight thousand for civil, eighteen thousand for sanitary, and fourteen thousand for water. I want to preface that those are ballpark amounts. I just want to make sure it's on everybody's radar. I'm sure Trista, it's on hers, because applications must be submitted by October nineteenth, but amounts need to be included on our Form Three. So, additionally, the council would also need to adopt a resolution next meeting, probably at the initial opening of your budget hearings. But you don't want to miss it.
No.
Right.
That's, that's leaving money on the table.
Leaving money on the table. Sure.
And it might need more research, I don't know.
Okay.
But is there still a population portion to that, or have they separated that out from the statute?
I don't know about the population portion. I can look at it tomorrow. But we've, we've met the requirements the last two years, because obvious...
I hope it works. My only concern, that will take some additional research, I think, from all sides, is if there is a population component to it, this is the first year that we've had the twenty-twenty census numbers, because in twenty-twenty-one, they weren't released yet. And if we have to compare it to the census ten years prior, it may be different this year than we were qualifying the last couple of years.
May be different, but I still wouldn't leave money on the table. So, I definitely suggest you attempt to get that money for the town of St. John.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
Joe?
So, as Wayne had indicated, that the skate park is substantially completed. There's some minor housekeeping things, some finished landscape that needs to get taken care of. I don't know if the, they had gotten the concrete and stuff out, but I talked to Bob Davis last week about getting the remaining portion of that concrete out of there. They were gonna just bury it, and, yeah, thanks to Wayne, it didn't get buried. We took care of it appropriately, so they don't have, you know, concrete in the dirt out there. So, that's gotten taken care of. The CCMG road project is underway. That's a two-point-three million dollar project. We received one million dollars from the state of Indiana, as you know. This is covering nineteen streets within the town. They've been doing some concrete work, curbing sidewalk for ADA compliance along those areas. They're gonna begin doing the milling after Labor Day, so after the holiday. They'll get all of that milled down and then repaved shortly thereafter. They expect to be completed in October with that project. The US forty-one project, there, as you all know, there's been a culvert conflict on that. Right now, we're waiting on AT&amp;T to support one of their fiber cables. I forwarded you that email from the state engineer, indicating that, you know, there was an issue with AT&amp;T and getting that supported, but they're, they're moving past that, and hopefully, they'll get the culvert completed. We can get our lines reconnected and have that project move along. So, that concludes my report for this evening, and then we're gonna get into the budget here shortly.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Yeah. Item number nine is our study session for the annual town budget.
If I could, if I could, as part of my report, ask for a waiver of vendor fees for the skate park vendors for the opening day on September tenth for that.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the vendors' fees for the skate park opening scheduled currently for September tenth.
And that date might be flexible, just so...
That's what I said so tentatively, Joe.
Okay. Thank you, Brian, for the motion. Mike supported. Roll call, please.
Mr. Aurelio?
Yes.
Mr. Blazak?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Schilling?
Yes.
And Mr. Swett?
Yes. That is approved five to zero.
Good call.
Thank you, sir. All right. Turn it over to you, Joe.
Trista? Trista? So we've, we've got some, um, preliminary numbers here for the budget, uh, consideration for the 2023 budget, uh, which begins, uh, January 1st.
I don't believe I have that.
Well, I mean. My apologies. Uh, we do have the, a, uh, visual presentation on that. This is the, the, basically the, the summary of the budget. Um, the numbers we're looking at. I don't know if you can read them on that. Cause I'm sure Wayne can't read it.
Do you have any more for me?
Yeah, sure.
Oh.
I didn't get any.
No, I thought there was a handful.
You'll get, you'll get the digital copy. Trista, did you get one too?
No, I'm good. I have the screen.
Oh, you got the screen? Okay, good.
Oh, okay.
Okay, good. So, Trista, you wanna?
The first comment that is important for everyone to note is it's a work in progress. And the reason that these copies are too, they're probably still warm from the printer. Um, Joe and I were on the phone yet this evening, uh, 5 o'clock or something, to continue to kinda tweak and, um, evaluate things that have been presented. So for today, um, I think I'd kinda like to run through the overall revenues versus expenditures, highlight some things. But try to spend as much time as we can on the different requests that department heads have made, so that you can hear, uh, most specifically in the general fund, the items that they're asking for something different compared to years before, whether it's increase or decrease. And that way you can start to evaluate where the important parts are. We certainly want to head, uh, toward a balanced budget, meaning that the revenues will cover the expenditures that you want. Most of your funds, as you know, do have a cash balance in them. And so you have an ability to spend more money than revenues coming in for this year, but it's not recommended that you do that. We like those cash balances to build for you, so that you have room for emergencies when they come. Uh, it's just good financial management, as I'm sure you all do at your homes as well, having extra funds on hand for those things that you aren't expecting. So we are hoping that as we get, um, closer to the time of the public hearing and the vote, that that column of over-under doesn't have any negative numbers in it. That's ultimately the goal. The other important part right now is that the revenues don't include the items that Beth mentioned for the appeal, only because today, as we sit here, we're just being a little bit conservative, if in case the DLGF doesn't approve them. But at the time that we suggest numbers for the publication of the Form 3, which is the notice to the public, those extra revenues will be included, so that you are advertising for as much as you possibly can. And if for some reason the DLGF rejects, uh, the request, then they simply come, the revenues come down a little bit and the rate is adjusted likewise. So we absolutely will, will make sure and keep in mind and recommend to you that the revenues are, uh, as high as they can be and that the expenditures then balance out in that same direction. Um, Beth has given me a listing of the revenue she was anticipating. The DLGF has released additional estimates since then, and so it is still a moving target, work in progress. Um, and we'll be talking with her more as, uh, everyone's evaluating the expenditures too, to make sure that, um, she agrees that things look in pretty well working order. Anything to add, Joe, before we talk about some departments?
No, not right now. I just, I mean, I know the, the department heads and, and everyone put a lot of time and, and effort into, you know, getting these, you know, numbers together right now. So, um, we're still gonna be going through these with, uh, Clerk Treasurers Office to make sure that everything's, you know, lining up to where we all expect it to be.
Across the board, departments, uh, asked about raises, of course. They know that council considers those each year. And so as we see some of the expenditure lines a little bit higher than last year, it is to be anticipated that they would ask that again. Uh, those are here included in the numbers overall. Um, trying to just highlight a few things. I know that our timing here will be cut short tonight a little bit. Uh, there's a few places that some engineering costs are increased, uh, compared to last year. That's really, I think, based on additional projects that are being, uh, considered or hopeful to be considered. And so they're trying to, department heads are trying to plan ahead for that. Let me just skim through here quickly. I would say that the police and the fire departments had, uh, the most additional requests, if we can call them additional, uh, things for the, the fire departments, such as some new equipment, uh, that needs to be replaced, uh, of the aging equipment that is, is getting older. Um, Chief mentioned some hoses and ladders that were getting old and they may not meet the testing, um, uh, benchmarks, qualifications any further. Uh, we did discuss with, uh, the fire department at length about the way that they're paid, and I have some questions for Beth, and I'm gonna try to call her about tomorrow, in the sense that the pay follows the exact hours that they work as opposed, which makes their checks a roller coaster, as opposed to a 28-day average.
We, right, but last year, last year, we, we suggested to them that they follow the Crown Point schedule, and that was denied.
I think that's, that's probably what will be recommended.
So we went through this whole scenario last year to correct it, and so.
And I wasn't here then, so I appreciate that information. Um, so that was one of the topics that Chief brought up again. It would obviously be much easier for them individually planning.
They're the ones who didn't wanna do it.
Oh, okay.
So.
Didn't know that, but thank you. Um, and their family planning across, across their paychecks and budgets. So that was an item. That doesn't change necessarily the, uh, expenditure total line item that you have. It's just possibly an adjustment, and we wanna make sure that the payroll system too, um.
It probably would make payroll a lot easier too, I think.
I mean, we suggested it for various different reasons. Payroll on our side would definitely be easier, consistency in paycheck, uh, certified salary issues.
Right. It addresses all of that.
It addressed all of it, and that.
We'll be, we'll be talking about that specifically when we get more into the budget, but more importantly, with the salary ordinance as well.
While we're on, uh, Fire, if you don't mind, can I ask, in the spreadsheet that you have for, um, Cume Fire, does that contemplate reestablishing that fund? Or have you made a decision not to reestablish that fund?
I need to double-check the timing on that myself for reestablishment. Cume Sewer, I also had the same question on. The CCD rate reset always has to be done earlier in the year. Um, what I need to refresh my personal memory on is the timeline on Cume Sewer and Cume Fire, because I think that they have to be at the same time. Which means it's missed for this year and needs to be done for next year, right away. Get it on the agenda at the beginning of the year, January, February, give it, vote it on March, April, and make sure that you meet the deadlines.
Right. I just wasn't sure if a decision had been made, whether or not you were planning to reestablish.
Yeah. I mean, it'd be crazy not to.
Well, they.
Well, we didn't do it because they were looking at going into a territory at one time, so.
Well, that, and if you reestablish it, you're taking money out of your general fund to reestablish it, but unlike the CCD fund.
Yeah.
But if you're gonna be funding a, a fire truck.
I mean, I think maybe me, you, and Trista could have conversations about that and the timing and stuff like that. That's, that's, I would put that on the parking lot for sure.
Um, in the Fire Department regard, of course, there is still conversation about additional number of employees, as that same conversation includes the Police Department.
As it stands, we do have, uh, two additional personnel for both Police and Fire.
In the present numbers, right? Fuel costs, of course, will be, um.
That's gonna be.
I, I suppose I say challenging, only because it's much higher, as you all know, even in your personal vehicles, than it has been before.
Yeah.
Um, they, neither are asking for an unreasonable amount of money in that line item. It's just simply, needs to be considered that the prices increase a lot. And so that will be something that, um, you'll see is a, a larger increase than what you might normally expect from one year to the next.
Don't tell me where.
Insurance prices, of course, have gone up, both for, uh, vehicle insurance as well as the health insurance. Again, expected on an annual basis. I'm not sure, Joe, if you have a comparison yet for this next year? Have they given you?
No, in fact, we are scheduled to go out for taking a look at what kinda costs we might have for health insurance, um, in August, September, is what we were, we were thinking.
Unfortunately, the timing.
It doesn't come up for renewal until, you know, early next year, but it's not a bad idea to take a look, see what the market, you know, what we can get.
Well, unfortunately, in the insurance market, the timing always for their renewal quotes, they like to hold off until about October. For you all voting on a town council budget under the DLGF deadlines, you can't wait quite that long. So, um, you'll, might have to put a little bit of pressure on them to get it in a little bit sooner.
He's, he's really good about getting back on stuff. And, you know, maybe we take a look at a different, um, alternative too. You know, for the health insurance too. Um, how, how much of an increase did we have, Beth, do you know, for the, uh, workers comp? And general liability?
The percentage offhand.
I, I know, I.
Definitely. And they were behind on their workman, workman camp audits, so we got hit with, um, extra there.
Yeah.
So, um, I would have to take a look at the actual overall percentage. I have that information in my office. I just didn't bring it with me this evening.
I, I mean, I got the invoice, but I don't know year over year what that looked like, you know, in terms of cost.
We break it down by, um, type of insurance, um, and that.
Like clerical and stuff like that?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
It's kind of, we're talking liability, um, umbrella, the cyber. We go through the whole.
Uh, some of the minor funds, of course, are not revenueed by revenue sources, not property taxes. It's the miscellaneous revenues that they receive, whether it's fees or other kinds of taxes that are collected from the state. Again, looking to keep the balanced budget, as we've talked about. Um, not a lot of change really in those funds, as far as requests go from the department heads. The Police Department, of course, has concerns with the increased price of some of their items, such as ammunition. Every city and town is struggling with the increased cost of that. And Chief is cognizant of it and trying to do the best he can as far as, um, being reasonable in his orders and things. One concern I do have that I wanna look at a little bit more, Joe and I haven't talked about it yet, but the trash collection fund. Um, I'm a little concerned that we're getting lopsided with expenditure of the contract versus revenue coming in. Uh, it's not necessarily an emergent issue today, but we certainly need to take a look at it and figure out if some adjustments need to be made going forward.
Well, you guys are coming up on your garbage contract anyways, but the problem is, is that we've always charged exactly, residents exactly what Republic charges the town. And so luckily, in the town of St. John, the majority of our residents pay their utility bills, so we're collecting at a great rate. But if you get into a situation where residents hit on hard times, we're in a recession, and if things keep going downward, what are we going to do as a town in the event your trash collection fund doesn't have enough to cover the bill?
No surplus.
No surplus. We, we never have.
It's, it's running really lean.
There, we watch the fund every month to make sure we have collected enough to make the payment.
I think there was like 1,500 bucks in there on the last report.
I mean, it's, it's designed, by design, to, to zero out. You're, it's, the way it's designed is you are going to collect 100%, and then you are going to make that payment of 100%. But we all know, we don't collect at 100%.
And, and the nice thing is, is it pays the same to Republic.
Correct.
So we'll need to be aware of that and consider, um, what we do about it. I'm not suggesting that we store up a lot of cash balance, as Beth's saying, it doesn't need to be, but a couple thousand is probably a good idea.
If we're not making anything, why don't we just let Republic send the bill to the customer? Correct.
Well, that is an option.
Don't need for the town to be in the.
I like that idea.
I got a feeling that there would be some kind of excess charge if we asked them to do it.
And, and my concern is that.
And yet we can do it for free. Isn't that work rate? You gotta love private commerce.
My secondary concern to that is that by the town having the contract, you're able to get a little bit cheaper quote bulk rate for your residents than if they were each individually.
Right. Residents first.
We all have the same garbage day. If you have people having their own garbage, you're gonna have five different garbage days. Because I may have Republic, so maybe in Vienna.
Yeah.
It's gonna be public.
You may shop for the cheaper place, so.
Since it's a pass-through and we're not making anything off it, why are we even?
Cause you could have 10 different garbage companies in the town of St. John.
You bring up a good point. You don't wanna have a bunch of different garbage companies, but maybe have it priced out, see what it would cost to have it built correct.
And that's, and that's the problem too. When you get too many people involved in it, then the prices, they're gonna start getting competitive. And once they do that, the whole thing's out of control, and how do you bring it back?
There are some, there are some towns or cities that use the trash as a revenue generator for the town or city. St. John doesn't do that for the reasons mentioned, and I think that's fine. I'm just suggesting that we need just a little bit of extra.
Cover our costs.
In that fund, just to make sure it's covered, is all.
And right now, we've been working on the edge, so.
Yeah. Um, for today's purpose, those are about the comments that I have at the moment. We certainly will have more information for you coming up, uh, very soon, as, as we try to get things a little bit better balanced, to help you make the best decision possible. Um, I would like to take a couple minutes to talk about the stormwater draft of the rate study that we've been able to put together for you, um, in the last couple weeks. So can we switch that, or do we have a couple of questions first? Joe, what do you think?
Uh, I, that's fine. Um, Wayne, I, I believe I, I may, emailed this to you, cause I, I knew you weren't gonna be here this evening. So I made sure that you have a copy of the handout that she's, she's gonna pass out here.
Yeah, I got it. I got a copy of that.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Well, you'll get one. She's passing them out.
No, no, that's fine.
So I was involved with, uh, an organizational meeting. I know this has been a topic, I think, involved, or in conversation in town for, for several months. Um, I was here, I believe it was the end of June, uh, with some people from Robinson Engineering, with some people from Public Works. Obviously, Bob and Bob were here, and John, um, and Joe. The main goal of a quick timeline from then forward is if the town is wanting to consider adding a stormwater fee, then we strongly recommend that you do it through the county property tax process, property tax bills. Uh, for one, it saves all of that extra paperwork through the Clerk's office. But most importantly, it is a fee that the county will process on the property tax bill. And what that allows you to do as a town is if it is not paid, then a property can be leaned for that amount, not to the point of a tax sale, but leaned so that, uh, if the house is sold later, then the town can recoup that fee. Uh, the reason underlying the importance for the stormwater fee ultimately, is that the state does require the town, uh, to process through the MS4 items. And I'm probably not the best person to speak on that, but there are state-required environmental things for drainage, uh, for, uh, environmental controls of, of runoff water versus rainwater, um, that have to be addressed. And right now, the town doesn't have a great way to fund that. Uh, it can then, beyond those state requirements, go to fund as well drainage, uh, projects that you need to have done. So if you are replacing a road and you currently have a joint sewer for rainwater and storm wa, for rainwater and sewer, um, to separate those out is typically the, the best practice recommendation, so that the rainwater can be filtered separately. It doesn't then go into the quantity that is needed at the sanitary department. Their job becomes easier. Uh, the rainwater then is funneled off separately and can be used more quickly back in the environment as well. Um, so lots of things involved in that. There are, um, the potential then for just culvert replacements for things that are failing, uh, that kind of thing as well. So what you have in front of you is just an initial draft. Um, the first two pages are a summary of the types of property. The first two pages are a summary of the types of property that are within the town. You start at the top with agricultural, the 100 code numbers, moving into industrial, the 300 code numbers, moving into commercial, and then residential. And you see there the list of, or the number of those types of properties. The reason those codes are important is because that's how you can determine what amount of fee those different types of property should have. A commercial or an industrial property typically has much more impervious surface, concrete, asphalt, building roofs, less grass. And so, there is less surface for the rainwater to be absorbed into naturally, meaning more runoff is created. And so, are there then more drainage infrastructure items that are needed because of that? And so, that builds into why you'll see the rate structure often suggested as it is. We all know that the town of St. John is very highly residential use, and so you do see that, that number in the residential category, the 500s, have the largest quantity. The second page then moves into the typically property tax exempt properties, religious organizations, schools, municipalities, that type of thing. And then your 800s are railroads and utilities. The part of the timeline that I, I didn't mention initially, I did mention the property tax bills. So, twice a year, your people in town, residents, businesses, what have you, would have this on their property tax bill. The county requires that whatever billing items the town is asking to be included on that bill is to them by the end of October. And there's processing that has to happen to give them a particular kind of tax file, which is a conversion form Excel, and so it just takes a little bit of time to process. And so, if this is something that's going to be adopted, the stormwater board needs to probably review it, give a recommendation to council, and then council will evaluate that and give time on a council meeting for that as well. So, that process needs to keep moving along very quickly. Bob Davis was able to give to Robinson Engineering, I believe on Monday, then, some project items, which we'll see in a few minutes, for some actual project locations and some actual values that you can use to evaluate how you think a fee would be able to go if it's workable. And so, we were able to then put this together for you during the day today. Page number, number six, it's actually three of the packet, is a summary breakdown of some of those expenses. So, just very quickly, operation and maintenance are those MS four-related, the state-required operational-type things that need to happen, the inspections that they need to do to make sure contractors are complying, all the various things. It does currently include salary money for that type of person, and I can provide to you a breakdown, a little bit more, of what some of those expenses are. That would help relieve some stress on the general fund if you were able to move some of that salary over to a stormwater fund. That MS four-related compliance then relates to, in part, the operations they need to do, but also some consultant work that would need to continue to happen to assist in getting them compliant with the state requirements. The equipment line is an average kind of rolling five-year capital replacement plan. It considers the fact that some of the Public Works vehicles are used, in part, for stormwater items, and so the portion of the stormwater work is attributable to the stormwater fund, keeping then the Public Works portion attributable to their budgeting, dump truck, pickup truck, that kind of thing. The stormwater, then, item number four, stormwater flood control rehabilitation projects, those are actual particular projects that Bob Davis had identified. And again, I can forward you that list. I didn't think to attach it specifically here. A few things that Bob had looked at so far, I'm sure they're on people's radars. Ray's Villa, Colif's Edition, subdivision Oakwood Drive Storm Sewer. That was the most expensive and kind of at the top of the list for potentially the most urgent. A 95th Place Drainage Improvement, Spring Lake Road Drainage Improvement. And then, as we go across five years' worth of time, there are additional projects that they have listed as well. So, this line, the 560, is shown here for some math, but the average, five-year average of 592 is actually what's included, as you'll see going forward. Other capital costs are just some random expenses that may come up as well there. If you turn then to numerical page seven at the bottom, which is page four of your packet... I'm sorry, I'm going really, really quick. I just want you to have some background so you can start to think about it and get a feel for what's going on. So, we've taken, then, on this page, the different totals of types of property, industrial, commercial, residential. You see the same total there down the middle, 5,967 parcels approximately in town, and given you some examples of if you structured a fee in that monthly fee column, the way that you see, what would the potential annual revenue be to the town? You'll then be able to compare that on the next page to the proposed current expenditures and be able to evaluate how many projects do you want to have at the front of the list? How much time, maybe if you give a lower fee? How much time would you need to collect some revenue up and cash balance to be able to do some projects? So, there's a lot of, of thinking to do. I wanted to give you option A as a very low end, up through option D, which would exactly cover, or projected to cover, this first year of projects and revenue, or projects and expenditures. Again, no decisions tonight whatsoever. This is just some initial information. This is what, what people have been discussing, people being these, this project list. Bob Davis giving you Robinson Engineering. Is identifying, again, what the most emergent projects are, are coming forward. The very last page then is just simply that comparison of those four different options of rate structure compared to this current list of project costs. Gives you an idea of what, what may work and what may not work. Again, if you aren't ready yet to start some of the drainage projects, and you want to schedule those in a year or two or three, then you would adjust the expenditures. Likewise, then, can evaluate what type of rate might be good for the town if, in fact, you're going to pass one. Again, all very preliminary. What I am comfortable, though, is, is this information the way it's set up for you? The parcels that we anticipate being here. This has not taken into account any kind of collection rate. We typically would say about 95, 98% collection rate, and so we do ultimately need to consider that as you go into whether you'll approve something or not. But this is, again, just real basic starting information.
Yeah, and I think we, we still want to run this through the, the stormwater board.
Yes, they have not seen this yet.
We just literally put these numbers together, so...
Right.
I, I still want to have them take a look at it, weigh in on, on how we want to ramp this up, because I know there was a discussion about doing something to that effect, too.
Right.
I'd like a recommendation from them at some point.
For sure. And I think probably to hear from Bob and, Bob and John on how emergent the projects are. You may already have some of that information yourselves. I'm probably not as familiar as, as, with it as you are. But to know what, what's really critical and what can be pushed off yet for a year or two, so...
We do, Trista, have our timelines set together. I mean, the timeline is set up, and we're going to hit those dates regardless.
Yes.
Okay.
And this was that first step in the process, so... I forget when the stormwater meeting is. I just didn't look at my timeline before I came in here, but...
I believe that we're meeting before council meetings every month.
Okay.
We had a meeting already over a week ago.
Okay.
But I believe that we've scheduled it in, so it's gonna drop in before the council meetings at 6:00 instead of 7:00.
Any other questions?
We'll wrap this up, Jerry.
For Joe or Trista?
All right, that concludes everything for, for now, I think.
You're good?
Yeah, that's all I had for tonight.
Okay.
Sorry for the speed, but thanks for the time.
All right. Thank you.
And we'll, we'll be getting with, with Beth and sometime probably next week, then.
Okay. So, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
We are adjourned.